Go ahead and get started. This is the city council work session. It's 6:00 PM on April 18th, 2022. And we'll go ahead and get started with item one, which is to discuss scheduling. A lot of time. I'm so sorry. I'm off my game right now. Let's do a place allegiance.
Place allegiance is to flag the United States of America and to Republican Party's hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Patty, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
President.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gun.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Sosman.
Here.
And Councilmember Leslie Notaro was unable to attend.
I apologize for that. This sounds a little weird. It's very echoing.
No minds on it.
Yeah, I don't think we should have to turn them off and on. It's just, we'll deal with it. I think as time goes on, we'll figure it out. All right, so it's item one, to discuss scheduling, a lot of time and completion date to fully review the city's strategic plan. I added this because it's something that we, in the last year, pretty much lost. We weren't really paying much attention to it. There were a lot of distractions and I feel like this is something that needs some attention. So, my reason for putting it on here is to come up with some sort of a plan that we could go through this thing, make some modifications, and then get back on track with following the strategic plan. I'm open to suggestions.
Just as a background, Lynn, raise and I sit down on a weekly basis and kind of look at update the objectives and stuff like that. We haven't changed. We've reordered some of the goals based on the council discussion we had previously. We start with a review of the typical SWAT stuff, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. That's a good starting place. We've been through the assumptions and there doesn't seem to be a lot of change there. I've included a list of the old assumptions and believe it or not, go through it. I think there's not a whole lot that's probably going to change. But I can get, I can get out copies of the updated objectives itself and everybody can kind of go through the laundry list. We prioritize just all that even, just kind of let's look real quick and probably.
Yeah, you think it's something we can get through in one or two meetings?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Is the 2019, 2020 one not valid or no?
Well, that's pretty much, nothing's changed. That's the actual existing strategic plan with Lynn and I gone through and that and kind of a list of objectives attached to it. And obviously, it's kind of outdated. So, as we scratch things off the due list, we've cleaned other things up. So, that's, that's pretty much it. But if you look at the form that I use, if you look at the assumptions, if you look at the opportunities and strengths.
Is it going to be presented to all of us like it's never changed, but that works one of the ways? Which was easier to comprehend.
Yes, yeah. But I suggest, you know, just kind of go through the assumptions and strengths and weaknesses first and then I can add up the updated list of objectives. We typically only deal with one or two at the same time because we don't want to overwhelm ourselves with the staff. And then attached to that, there's a list of some things. If everybody is adept enough, I could have you drop the brief right now.
Can you wait until we have our documents back?
Yeah. Can Patty just email that?
Yeah, too. Eventually, we need to decide whether to join the 1990s.
Well, I just want to make sure it sounds like you're preparing the assumptions, the ground rules for a review of the existing strategic plan or not overhauled the strategic plan.
I don't think so unless, but, you know, you, I think you have to take into consideration we've got new council members and I think they all came with an agenda in their head. And that will obviously change with time, but they have some priorities now. So, I think we need to, as a baseline, you know, the whole purpose of the strategic plan is to baseline all of us, I mean, all think the same. What's the number one goal? What's goal number last? And when we start dealing with budget lineups, well, does that pick the priority or not?
And also, kind of laying out how we will implement the strategic plan because we're just, it sounds like we're bouncing around. So, I want to come out of the meeting with specific, okay, here's the target, here's the date, here's who's responsible to move on. Okay, we did one, two coming up. Some of those are not accomplish. I mean, they're kind of steady state goals, but, you know, whatever's accomplishable, we want to get dates associated with it.
Yeah, if you look through, again, I would like to show you, you know, we had the old, we had five target goals here. We had, they were rearranged by the, by the prior council. Goal number one, public safety and health. Number two, tax dollar value, communications and community, aesthetics, beach and water. Okay? And against each one of those, we've listed some objectives, like for number one, address the immediate street lane issues, emergency generator funding, acquisition of infrastructure. Tax dollar value, master food label plan analyzed, Duke versus solar, integrate the comprehensive, not the comprehensive, but the capital improvement plan with a budget, improve traffic. We're talking about public, public light traffic monitoring, council chamber audio visual, artificial turf ordinances, each revision. So, within each goal, we only have really one or two objectives at a time because we don't want to spread ourselves too thin here. And as we scratch one off, we have kind of a laundry list or a brainstorm list and occasionally we just sat down because we can't typically get the entire council involved in a work session. So, we just kind of sat down and said, okay, well, what fits the next priority there? So, that's kind of what he's been working on and he's been making great progress.
Well, and that's, that is working well and it should be what we're doing. However, we do have a new council and so we want to make sure that everyone's goals are still in alignment with that strategic plan. And if not, then where do those goals fit, which will lead us into number two of the agenda tonight, which is everyone's goals. What are you trying to accomplish?
So, the approval then, what I'll do is I'll get this copy out to everybody and if you want to do it, we'll do it a day at a time, I will kind of facilitate and do a quick walkthrough and then I'll kind of facilitate the brainstorm session for what's your number one goal, what's your number one goal, what's your number one? And you just kind of tally it up and make sure.
Add a workshop. Add a workshop, I'd like.
We don't want to do this in a regular.
I know, not really.
And I'll send you the most recent list with what we accomplished. It was updated, I want to say, January or February.
And what it should have is it should have any, any goals that are currently in progress and then what hasn't started yet and then what's, you know, what's, what's next on the list, what's coming in the future so that if we decide that maybe we should move some things around. I think for the most part, Bel Air Beach is relatively simple and we're going to have the same repetitive goals over and over and over. It's just, it's what I consider the nuisance goals are the ones that, where do you fit them in that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public knows in each and every step of the way, these are what are out there and these are in current status so they can ask, hey, what's going on? Well, it's already on board here to, oh.
I like that. All right, so what do we think is a relatively reasonable timeframe? You think month, month from now? So, we have, we have one work session next month and we'll add it to the calendar and we'll just see if we can focus on that and knock it out. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so obviously, number two, there's a, it's compile a list of expected goals from each council member to be considered in a future work session. That ties right in with the city strategic plan, but also, some of these things may be, they may just be, like I said, nuisance problems that we can just, low hanging fruit, we can take care of them and make them go away pretty quickly. I don't know what everyone else, what conversations they've had with the citizens recently, but there were a few things that came up and some of them are already being addressed. But compiling the list, did everyone bring something? Did anyone bring something that they wanted to add to the list right quick? And then we'll, we'll figure out how to prioritize that list and get it in the hands of Vice Mayor Gun.
I have nothing right now. We need to Vice Mayor this week, though.
Okay.
So, you want to send directly to the Vice Mayor, send to Patty?
I think it has to go to Patty, yeah. And I think everyone will get a copy of that, but once it's all, once everything's in, then the Vice Mayor can compile it and come up with some sort of a strategy to apply to the city's strategic plan. So, we need a deadline on that. I'm open to, since we're having the work session for the strategic plan in sometime next month, maybe two weeks would be reasonable. If I agree with that?
What do you get?
Just to hand over the list to Patty of what it is.
On the 29th, yeah.
Yeah, I don't even think it'll take that long. Most of us already know what's, what's to be expected, but that would be the 29th.
Yes, for it.
And those would be the items that would be discussed at the, the next, we would bring it in with the city's strategic plan.
And before you send yours, I'll send mine, so you can review mine and take a look at it because you may just say, oh, it's right there. You just need to modify it or something like that.
Or the ongoing, not necessarily yours, the ongoing strategic plan, right? Sorry, I'm less, yeah. I don't want to take misinterpreted that it's just your idea, you know?
Keep me straight.
When were you sending yours?
Say, pardon?
When were you sending yours?
I can send that by, what's today?
18th, Monday.
Yeah. I will have that out before the end of the week. No later than Friday.
Here's this week.
Well, I already had my whole list, but, you know.
What's that?
I said, I already had my whole list here, but I'll send it back.
You're an overachiever.
It is.
It would not be, yeah. Yeah.
All right, that was relatively painless. Now, let's move on to these boats in the water, discussing vessel mooring in the inner coastal.
And these are the ones, this is an item that would be on the strategic plan because I think we talk about waterfront safety and that sort of thing, but clearly, our ordinance doesn't allow for it, but it continues to go on. We've got two vessels, one, the Causeway here, that have been there for several months and then one that comes and goes quite frequently. I know one of them had a sticker on it, they couldn't get close enough to see what it was, but a big red sticker on the side. The other one, I don't know if the person's living on it. The other vessel that does have a mast also has a dinghy. They come into shore with their dinghy or bring the boat in close enough. So, on low tide, it's laying on its side and they just walk in. So, there's, we do have, it's in our code. I don't know how we enforce what's in our code and so that's why I'm ready to bring it to the attention of the council and see how we proceed and Lynn will be able to give us some, some more information.
Yeah, the boat that's got the broken mast, the sticker is, it's going to be taken away. I asked the sheriff to go out and get pictures with the vessel numbers on it and he's trying to get that scheduled. Recently, there's a canoe out there, we're trying to figure out if that's even allowed because it's anchored.
The canoe's anchored?
Yeah.
It's a small one. I spun around it yesterday to take a look at it.
Yeah, it's on, it's on anchor.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, and so Captain Liner said he would try to get the marine. I said, either that or just schedule something for one of the staff to go out because we've done that with them before and he'll take pictures, get the vessel, but they can run who owns it. And Andy and I talked about the possibility of claiming it as a nuisance. So, that's where we're at right now. But the sheriff has, has said in the past that there isn't anything he can do about it, but if we claim it as a nuisance, we'll.
He's decided not to do anything about it.
Yeah.
All right, Mayor, if I can, the two ways to enforce it are obviously, we have contracted with the sheriff's office and the statute provides that they would be one of the entities that would go out and enforce it. The second way of doing it, as Lynn mentioned, is we could have it declared a nuisance, bring it to the special magistrate and then order for, for us basically to abate that nuisance. Then your choices are hire somebody to go out and pull it in. The process is basically, we try to get the value of the boat and then determining on the value, the city decides whether or not to destroy it and we at least have a record of what the value was in case somebody ever comes back. But that process usually is long enough so that if somebody really wants their boat, they're going to come. And if they're not, then it'll be just destroyed. So, those are a couple of different options. Or we could bring it in and store it, charge them. Again, a lot of times, and you're all probably well aware, that anybody leaves their boat out there is probably not going to either have the money to pay for it or they don't care or they've left the area. And then it becomes just, we don't want to get a litigation on these because you just spend a whole bunch of money and we don't get any satisfaction. But if we do it as a nuisance and we're allowed to abate the nuisance, that's the cheapest way for the city to move forward, to have the boat removed at least from the waterways.
Now, didn't the county release some funds to take care of that?
That's, that's what's happening with, like that one with the broken mast. That's one of the boats that's going to be pulled.
Is this kind of a one shot, clean up the county and then, and then they're done? Or is this?
Pretty much. It's a hundred thousand dollars they're spending, but that's on, that boat is on the list.
It's not much money, right? Compared to what you need to spend.
No, and I, you know, I, I think, I don't think, what I'm seeing with these boats, there is a person that's going to them. Of course, not the broken mast one and I haven't seen anybody go to the canoe. It's just been sitting there for a couple of weeks. I have seen someone go to the one that's tilted over and over here, the same thing. And then there's a, I call it a cabin cruiser that pulls in over here and then he leaves for a few days and he comes back and pulls back in.
The problem I have with, with the cabin cruiser, they're not, they're not dumping. They're, they have to be dumping in our water.
That's where I.
And then, and Mayor, you know, that's the way to also to enforce these is through the sanitation provisions of the statute and that the sheriff should be doing.
I guess it's just up to us to notify them, but there's.
Well, if we get there, well, no, there's three over here, pretty much stay around the island, you know, the party island out there. And then there's the broken mast, the sailboat, and in the last two weeks, this canoe that showed up. And then that cabin cruiser, it's there and then it's gone for a couple of days and it comes back.
Well, he's there and then he goes up off of Bel Air and then he goes to the Bluffs side. So, he moves it around often enough that it's not an issue, you know, that it's not, no one catches on. But, and just to that, do we maybe need to review our code to have some provisions for you're not being pumped out? If you can show us documentation that you've been pumped every 30 days, you know, that's one way, but I can guarantee there's no pump out on any of these vessels. They're dumping out of board, which is illegal within three miles of the shoreline.
Vice Mayor.
You know, we're not, we're not unique in this problem. I flew yesterday and, I mean, they're tucked in there behind the bluffs. You go north of Honey Moon Island in Caledonian, I mean, there's a fleet up there, north of that Causeway, up there up to the Honey Moon Island there. I mean, they're not in an available water, but they're all tucked out there. So, I guess it's a sign that you can have at times and a cost of storage units or whatever, but we're not unique in this problem. So, my question really or concern is, is with the Big C, is there a unified way to address this problem? Is everybody else willing to throw money towards the solution or, I mean, rather than just take on this battle ourselves?
You know, going into Dunedin for years, I could talk about last year when you cleaned it up, you had so many boats listed, listing in there and stuck in the mud. And all of a sudden, it disappeared. So, some of the downstream areas.
Something, something's happening, but we don't have that something's hap, something's happening budget.
Yeah. But like she said, I think it's a growing problem ever since the beginning of the year at CDC more and more.
There was a new person that, a new entry in Nextdoor, a new resident of Bel Air Beach. And whenever she listed her address, it was actually there and she, she was living on the boat and claiming to be a Bel Air Beach resident. So, there, obviously, the dynamic is changing. More and more people are just saying, I'm going to live on this boat and I expect it to get worse before it gets better.
Liverboards have more protection for the purpose, but how we get those, I'm sorry, how we get those the same way dumping. That's how you get rid of the liverboards that are dumping right into the water.
How far does our jurisdiction go in the center of the, center of the, of the coast?
And if it, if it's a liverboard and it will not crank, there's no way to get that pumped out. So, that, it has to, has to be moved somehow. And then who picks up the tab on that?
And that's the problem and other clients that have dealt with it, they pay for it and they usually, even if you get the value for the destructions, you're, you're losing money, fair amount.
But right now, we have one that's a problem that doesn't look like it'll move on its own, right? The others, we can push them out, can't we? I mean, Madeira Beach, from what I'm told, did crack down and that's why we have an issue here in Bel Air Bluffs now. And no one in the county who should, you know, the sheriff's not doing anything about it. Half the time, you can't use the boat ramps because, I mean, I don't want our backyard to turn out like Bel Air Bluffs is.
Well, she said, we attack this one right now aggressively, they could kill everything else.
Which are correct, that's what's happening. When one city cracks down and they just move, they just move.
And that's what I'm thinking about, we haven't done anything to, what do you, my right.
Yeah, they're right.
Well, see, if we do code enforcement, send a letter of a nuisance, you know, that would be the first step, if we send it as a nuisance, as a violation. Then, after you've notified them, if they don't move it, then you schedule a hearing with the magistrate.
And we can, we can lean them once there's a, a fine that's not paid or they do not remove it, so we will have a lien on their property, assuming they have something to be fined. And we get a judgment, that's good for 20 years, so.
The biggest problem you're going to run into is most of that is not anything that's of any value. It's junk. And unfortunately, that's what you see in most of these harbors is junk, junk and occasionally somebody's living on the junk.
Once it causes something like that to pull it out, destroy it, is there? I don't know off the top of my head.
Find out from, because Gulfport does it, I could find out.
Yeah.
Let's find out and then decide whether we need to actually add a line item in the budget for this project because we're going to have to fund it somehow. And I guess the first step is find out how much and what we can legally do and then establish a budget and start enforcing it.
What it can follow, that we also ask the local governments as well, what do they do? And the, the lessons learned.
Right.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you, like, I think it was Treasure Isle, they shrunk their, I'll call it.
Mored the.
No, they're mored. They, they shrunk it to try and get them out of there. But even Treasure Isle says, because I talked to their marine people about this some time ago, said you can't control it. He said, first of all, we don't have the boat or the equipment to go out and do anything about it. And so, that's a problem because their ordinance kind of mirrors a little bit of ours that says you can moor for 72 hours only in a 30 day. Well, if, this is the story they told me, what they do is they move 10 feet and they're not moored in the same spot, so there isn't anything you can do about it. Clearwater, they don't do anything about it.
We had this, we had a big meeting in Gulfport, probably had 70 plus people that were liverboards or supporter of liverboards, the same type of, oh, we'll just move it a few feet, we know how the rules are, you're not treating this fairly, and eventually pushed them to like Madeira. But it's, it's just because it's a, I don't want to say it's a harassment of them, it's when people are out there at least checking on them, they don't want, they don't like it because of what you all said, the dumping, those things. So, once they're being checked on, then they start moving to another place, but it's just keeps coming around in the town.
But I think then back to our ordinance too, you know, maybe we should say, unless you're a resident, you know, unless you're a property over in Bel Air Beach, you can't moor. There is no moor in Bel Air Beach. I mean, that's, you can clear, clean that, some of that problem up by just working on our ordinance.
Even there might be something, and this is going back, Lynn, you might remember this, remember the Coast Guard auxiliary? They were mandated, they can do safety inspections. And if we had Coast Guard auxiliary, because their, their gases kind of paid for taxes, but they could kind of basically do the enforcement just that, we're just checking for offshore discharge because that's Coast Guard territory. And the Coast Guard auxiliary, they're a non-cost, it's a volunteer organization. But again, now it's affiliated with them, what, 25 years ago? I don't know what they're doing now.
They're still, they're still around.
That might be one of those little things, just let them do the, that quote, the hassling. And if they don't like it, they'll tend to move.
I will reach out to the various mayors up and down the beach and see what they're doing and see if I can get some feedback from them. I think whatever we do, it's not going to be perfect, but we can certainly become a nuisance somehow in ourselves, you know? And make it where, if you're going to be here in our waters, you're not going to like it very well.
We're just checking in on you, doing a safety inspection.
Yeah. Or a giant flood line pointed right at your boat.
I mean, there was a time where half the beach was out of power because of a loose.
The drug line.
Yeah, a loose sailboat hit the power lines and caused some problems for.
All of these Coast Guard boat stations basically reporting to Sector Commander in the same P. And maybe as a group, the Big C, Bel Air's main water, touch base with the Sector Commander. I mean, he's probably more likely to respond to a, a letter for an invitation to lunch or something with the Big C to address some of these maritime obligations.
You call him the Sector Commander.
Sector Commander, same P.
Same P.
And right on the end of the same P.
All right.
He's the captain of the board in all that.
All right, well, we've got, we have some homework to do. Hopefully, we'll be able to come up with something. It's got to be better than what we're doing now. Anything else on this topic? No? Okay. Well, let's move on to general business. I would like to go back to the city manager position. I would like to go back to the city manager position. We had several things that were turned in and created and edited. And we'd like to discuss that. Especially since we're just cruising right through this meeting. Did everyone get a copy of the pre-screen? Any feedback on that? This was taken directly from our app that we had posted. And. Somebody shrunk it down?
Yeah.
It wouldn't fit on a page whenever, whenever I printed it. Anyway, so what I did was I looked at the education and the experience and then location as, as really the top three, top three scoring items. And then you had all the granulars to add to that. So it would give you, if they, if this was the perfect candidate, they would have a, a score of 40. This was, I just threw it out there. That's kind of the way that I saw it. But I would like to hear what others think about it, and if there's something that maybe we should change, or, or was everyone good with this?
The only thing I'd recommend is taking names off of the, the details, the specific details to the person off these. Usually when they do employee rankings or they do screening like this, they'll assign a number. And whenever you see any material, you see a resume, it has a number on it, not a name, because you can, you know, people can be biased against that different spelling of a front, first name. And that kind of removes any perceived bias on our part.
So if we have a number, whenever we go to the interview section of, of, of hiring, how do we know what they scored? Would we know that at all?
I would say that when they come in there, well, you're not getting the name, just your number, your, everything associated with that one candidate has a number. So, hey, candidate number one, can you come, please come in? We have candidate one's resume, again, the name's taken off. And we review it strictly on that. You can just address him as candidate. And when we mark down candidate one, okay, meets public administration, here's your point standing. What I'm trying to do is remove any perceived notions of bias or prejudice in the job search.
I, I don't know how you do that when you have people within the city that's gonna be applying for the job, all they know. Some of us may have little friends who've asked to apply for the job, they'll come in. I, I agree with what you're doing, because a lot of companies, when they're doing promotion, they do.
Yeah, and again, I'm doing from the larger.
Yeah, you give your number and an application, and you go in there and bang it, and the highest score gets it.
Because militia, I mean, there's, there's a lot of problems with names and things now.
But I think this is just too small.
Well, I, I think the initial part is, you're gonna go through the applications, and you can, you can do something like that. Keep it isolated and wherever, but at some point, when you get to the shortlist and send out the invitations, I think we wanna get a little more personal with the people, right? You know, at that point, you know, the key's up, you know? We've identified people, come on in, tell us something, Dr. Stone, where you're from, you know, give us the elevator pitch. And then we're gonna probably ask some questions and give you a scenario or something.
I understand, but I, I gotta go back to when you originally brought this up in front of the board and I had to pull you up short. You kept talking about him, 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 and we can't afford that.
Sure.
Yeah, that's all.
So my idea on this was not to, for something that we would use. What, we have, how many applicants do we have now?
Eleven.
Twelve.
Twelve, we have 12.
Yeah.
So we have 12 applicants. This is something that, if we lighten the scoring system, I would like to throw this over to the citizen advisory board. And let them narrow it down, rank all of the applications, resumes, everything, and give us their top five. And then we go from there. What does everyone think about that idea?
I think it's kind of becoming to kind of back them up. I, I think they should have an independent shot of five. I think we should get to look at the whole package too, because if we hit five and say, you know, my number six guy, you know, he didn't even make the list. And I saw this and then I thought was interesting, but he just got into something. So I think there just needs time to be an independent backup there.
George?
I agree with it, Leo, just don't wanna, I mean, I wanna make sure that when we ever task a committee, that we actually take into consideration what they're recommending, because they're the ones, you know, on the ground. We'll still look at the remaining resumes and the packages, you know, to further inform ourselves of everything. But we really need to rely a lot on what they're bringing to us.
And, and that was the, kind of the purpose of, of this, was to give a first round elimination. So that we, we've got what, what they think is best.
I think most times, I know from where I came from, we had a big HR department, we don't, that's okay. But there's always gonna be a percentage that don't need the required items. So they, they by definition are eliminated. So we have some items on our advertisement, as well as our job description. So if it says, require you have to wear a blue hat, and they don't have a blue hat, they're out. So they're, they're off the table immediately. And then what's left, you know, that's when you're gonna sit down and either us or the other group, shortlist what's left to whatever number we think is, is a good number. And then we go through the interview process. That's, that's the way I would say.
Two.
I just, to the list, I have some, some questions or some additions, I think, that are kind of important. We'll talk about the paving, stormwater utilities, underground utilities, repairs and maintenance, things that we want, that we have ongoing in the city, and I think that needs to be added to part of what we are gonna require, someone to have experience with. And, you know, maybe the floodplain and N P D E S management could be part of the same category, if we're just trying to categorize stuff, but I'm just, I just think that that's a big part of the job. And that's where, you know, kind of Lynn shines, when we're talking about needing someone to take over this position.
Right.
Will be covered under your demonstration, probably the way it's like two, four items?
Yeah, public works.
Contract.
Instruction, public works operations.
So it's up in there, okay.
And I'll look at the bottom too, because you got the N P D E S management, floodplain management certified, all that's very, very bottom.
Okay, that's fine. I just don't, I don't wanna overlook that, that's all, I just.
We're, in the, what I was trying to accomplish was that, okay, we definitely have an education requirement. We have a city manager or, or comparable experience. And you see, if it's comparable, then you rank them zero to five, instead of just a five. Because the first two, you, you automatically score top if you've, if you've been a city manager or an assistant city manager, but comparable, okay, well, what was close? And that's where they're gonna have to do a little thinking and decide where, where the weighting is on that. Same goes with education. And then, of course, you get bonus points for doing that job in Florida, and even more if it was on a beach. So those things were, were the most important. And then you've, you've got all of these granular things where you may not have any experience with, with grants at all. But you've got all of these other things. So I didn't really think that, that dinging somebody because they were missing one of the important, one of the important items. Certainly, it may be their first time that they'll have to deal with a community that has these requirements. But Lynn, you had to figure it out somewhere, right? So, so that, that's kind of where I was going. And. What I'm looking for is, what are we missing? Is there anything we're missing? Is there anything that, that we should absolutely add that's not on here? Or do you, is there any of the weighting that, that you think should be more important or less important? Because right now, it ends in 40, and we can make it 700 if we need to.
How will this dovetail with the interview? I mean, that's the second part of this, right? So we go through the applications, we bring them, we come up with the shortlist. Then we have to combine something like this, the evaluation from this written application with the interview process. So that's, that's part B of this evaluation thing. And is it gonna be weighted 50/50, 60/40? I mean, that's, to me, that's just the last piece of the puzzle there then. I think this is a great start, it covers all the bases, and I think we've waited to demonstrate the experience properly. And then the next thing is, is we go to the interview process, see articulatives, we try to use quick, honest speech, can you relate to people, that sort of thing.
Or she.
That's a very good question.
Excellent.
God, for you then.
The first thing you say.
Yeah.
Qualify and not qualify. Everything else, it's gonna probably take more than that out of the trust. Because if we, if we research all this, probably 20, 30 before it gets done, we can find a candidate.
You know, I've thought about that, and you have people who might say, yeah, I've got experience in that. And you say, well, okay, well, show us a report or something, it would be ready. You know, I mean, show us some demonstrable thing to prove that you've done it. I, you know, I don't expect to see a certificate for.
I understand, but then do we delay his interview process there, so he can go back and pull his records out? You know, it's, it could be really idiot.
Honestly, I'm sorry. I'm thinking that just by asking questions, they should, they should immediately be able to answer exactly what they did to back up these abilities. And I don't, I don't think it, it would require just showing us a certificate that I completed this, you know?
So this will be not at the resume review stage, but their first interview will say the candidate?
If, if we have a top five, those are, those are the people that will, that will drill into a little more.
Yeah.
And ask, ask those hard questions.
So the committee will do a run of this and provide, they'll cut down to five. Then those five will come to us with the originals and we'll drill in.
Yeah, I'm thinking we get whatever the score is, exactly, and we see what the checkboxes are that they were able to fill in. And we have the resume, and we call them in for an interview, ready to go with some, some, some important questions.
This is our guideline for the questions, right? There's not, no need to really go to another. I mean, this, if, if you're going down this list and they, they have a high level score on a certain category, then we can ask them, because you overs, you know, I would, I envision us all in the same room and one person tagged with asking the questions, and then we would fill in anything that doesn't get answered, right?
Or, or things that do get answered.
Yes, that's true, or if there's a pressure.
Tension, I mean, you take the score, now of course, give the potential candidate all these questions here, or all these items here, and say these are things that were, were you wanting to?
No, 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 it's, this is, this is strictly for Bel Air Beach and the citizens advisory board, and.
No, I'm saying if the citizens are alive and willing to come back and says, yeah, we agree with this. So we have five candidates coming, or are we gonna say, we expect you to answer these one items?
I don't think so. I don't think they'll ever see this at all, but we'll, we'll have it while we're interviewing the, the, the various candidates. And is, is five enough? Five too little? Yes.
To answer your question earlier, Lynn, when you were saying, okay, now we've completed this, and then we go to the interview process. My recommendation would be that whatever number we pick, whether it's five, whether it's three, and we've chosen those based on the scoring system. My recommendation would be at that point that all of those candidates are solid, this goes away. This is gone. Then we have the interview process. So we know we're dealing with three candidates or five candidates that are very strong from an experience standpoint, an education standpoint, and then we interview them. And then from that, I don't think these scores come back in. It gets too complicated, and it really doesn't matter, because we know they're solid. Then we're gonna interview them, and then we, as a council, are gonna decide who the person is from, from that standpoint. I think when Julie was talking about, you know, what's the best way to handle this? I mean, we can do, we could have the committee do a phone interview, just to verify. So at this time, we have the resumes in hand and their experience. A lot of these questions can probably be answered already, just based on those documents. If not, just to confirm, and we confirm, and have them tell us. For example, the question is, tell me your experience with budget operations. And they say, yeah, I had plenty of it. Well, what is it? You know, via a phone interview. And so then these points are kind of finalized, I think, based on a combination of a phone interview if necessary, and the resume, total of the points. And then, and that committee's gonna be made up of some of the council members as well, right? Or like Lynn was recommending, maybe we do it also. But I think the combination of the committee and a couple of council members makes sense too. And so then we go ahead.
I was gonna say, my preference is, I wanna know where the guy's strengths are and his weaknesses are. Because I wanna ask him a question, I wanna confirm his strengths, and then I wanna ask him questions about his weaknesses. Because if he, if he's just completely lacking there, and he thinks it's, it's here for a reason. I guess I want, I wanna know where his strengths and weaknesses are. I don't think we should just, okay, you wanted the five, we don't need this. I wanna look and say, okay, yeah, tell me something about budgeting, what'd you, what'd you do in budgeting? Or what have you done in N P D E S management?
Well, I'm not saying we don't need it anymore, I'm just saying that that score, we may not want it to be applicable for the final decision-making process, because still use that and ask questions during the interview.
He's got, I think, a great plan, because if you wanna ask certain questions, go write it down on the sheet, give me the sheet. Bring that sheet with you and ask them, but that, that sheet should be in the, in the last process.
Yeah, it's, it's especially the score.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
But this, what I see with this is, this will give me a guideline of what to ask.
Sure.
Because I'm gonna see zeros in some places, and fives in others.
There's no argument there.
Right. So now how is this, are we in agreement with that? Is there anything I need to change on this, or, or everybody pretty happy with this part?
I agree with what you submitted, you're applying that you've worn down.
And what about the citizens advisory board? Do we, is everybody satisfied with just giving them the pre-screening job?
I agree, yes.
Because I was not, I, I didn't really think that any of us should be during, we should be in that, that portion of the, the selection process.
I agree, because that also gives the citizens a chance to really make a solid, you know, the recommendations.
So they would be the ones to score this?
Yes.
So the candidates that met the.
They're gonna look at, look at the resume, the application. Whether they make a phone call or not, I don't know. Maybe that's our responsibility once we.
Is your intention to give us all the resume before they go to the lodge and board?
Well, it's public record, anybody can.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying that ask for that, to proceed, or, are we? Because if we get 10 resumes, and then we're gonna say, well, where's this guy at? When they want to come back with three, where, where are we standing there?
Well, we give them an assignment and say, bring us your top five. And whenever we get that top five, we also get the resumes and all their work history, everything that they gave to the citizen advisory committee, the exact same data. So now we're looking at why they selected these guys as the top five. And then we can start in our own minds, narrowing down, what is it we're gonna ask each candidate? Because I'm assuming that we're all going to take turns, and we're going to be called on one at a time and ask, you know, a question, and go around till we're satisfied.
So the council won't be able to trump that lodge and board by saying, no, I think candidate so-and-so should be included in that, it'll be whatever the citizens lodge and board presents us, that'll, that'll close the door going into the process, right?
I would think that that would be fair enough, that that's, that, because they've already proven to be very sharp. And they've, they've done some, some great work for us already, and it'll keep us from getting bogged down in the weeds. Again, I'm, this is just some additional thoughts, but if we, this is, is a council, so we can do whatever we want. But I'm trying to make it. whatever we want, but I'm trying to make it as streamlined as possible, and I trust those guys.
Yeah, that's on purpose. I mean, you got to start here because we have other commissions too. Look, we're delegating the work and the responsibility, so we're going to accept what they come forward with. Again, we're making the guidelines, but they're coming back, if we say five, okay, they'll come back with the five, and...
I'll tell you, what we could do is reserve the right to reject anybody and make them give us another one, and then that way it keeps it fair.
I like that.
I can go for that, yeah.
I think if we do decide on a number, like we seem to be fixed on five, which sounds great, if the advisory committee was struggling one way or the other, if they had a sixth candidate as an example, I think it would be okay. We prefer five, but tell them, look, if you're struggling to try to cut five and six, it's okay. Or if you're struggling to get five, then give us four. Something like that, just so they have some flexibility in there. But five sounds, and a lot of it depends on, I think, how many candidates we get.
Right.
You know, we get...
I'm sorry, you could just have them rank them, one through twelve, and then you ultimately make the decision how many you want. So you see those numbers.
You'll see the natural rank.
And you'll see, so they're ranking them, and then you, and of course you could decide if you want to go down to the six, or only, you know, go to three.
No, we could do that.
I think it's important that we see all the resumes, even if they are all ranked out, but it's our duty as elected officials to be actively involved, right? And so even though we do have this committee that's helping us with that selection process, I think it's up to all of us to make sure we look at all those resumes. Just my feel.
Okay. If we're going to go through this, my feel is it should just go again, but we're going to do this process.
Which brings up, I took a course the other day about, it was put on by this fine gentleman. So I took the opportunity because I had, I'm the rookie here with the amount of time in the city, so I had not a lot of experience or opportunity to work with Kyle. So today, I went in there, did not interview Kyle, but we had a great conversation for about an hour, because I wanted to know him better, I wanted to know what he thought, how he works in the city, what his previous work relationships were, that type of thing. So I'm letting you guys know that, because I was told in a meeting earlier I was supposed to do that, when I have information that could be valuable and shareable to you guys. So I can just tell you the short story is, after meeting with him, I feel fairly confident that he would be a great choice with possibly not going through this process. That would save a lot of time and energy and work by all parties concerned. We're always going to get that pushback by people that say, well, you may not, you may have missed out on the opportunity of somebody who's just unbelievable. And what does that mean, unbelievable? You know, it's a very subjective term. So I just wanted to let you guys, all of you know, the whole council, that I took that opportunity to spend some time with Kyle. I know we had the meeting over in the other room, where we were talking about the city manager's resignation or retirement, but at that point I didn't really feel one way or the other, because I didn't know Kyle that much. I can tell you that on a lot of the doors that I knocked on around the city, unsolicited, now wasn't everybody, of course, because not everybody knew that our current city manager was considering retiring, but some did, because they unsolicited to me when I would ask them, what are some of the things you want me to work on if I'm fortunate enough to be elected? And some people would say, well, we know the city manager is leaving, I think Kyle would be a great city manager. Those type of comments came back from the citizens. So just letting you guys know that.
Yeah, my point, this is, I mean, to me, it's a legal call. I mean, do we have a problem with pre-selection now?
No. You're having this discussion at a public meeting and act as my student.
Well, that's what I want to make sure.
What I think is appropriate is that everybody's getting the same information, so you all know this interview or informal interview took place, you all know the feeling of one of the council members regarding that and their suggestion, so you're having all the same information deciding however you want to move forward.
Okay, is it my experience in private company, that would have been shut down?
Well, that's right. It's different in the public, because we do everything in the sunshine. So the transparency is the most important that you all will do.
Okay, thank you.
Going with Lloyd, he talked to somebody here, I'm not going to mention anybody's name, but had the boards here, they all have been dealing with Kyle the last year and speak very highly of him.
I've seen him at almost every public function that we've had for the last couple of years at least.
You talk to employees here, all considered very fair.
I'm glad we didn't talk about like he's not here.
I mean, again, legally, do, I mean, my belief is we should officially put them in the same pool for ranking, but what's the, again, what's the legal, I don't know.
Well, from a legal aspect, unless it's in your charter differently, you can handle this process however you choose. And I think I may have mentioned that before. You can do what you're, continue doing what you're doing, you could set at your next meeting, somebody can make a motion in the second, and you could approve Kyle if that's what you so choose. It's whatever the council wants to do, it's your own process. I brought that up the first night. Randy, great, I think. I would hate to lose him to somebody else if he thinks he's not going to get the job. He's proven he can do the job, and he's proven he can do the job physically too.
Well, originally, whenever we had this conversation, we, I don't think it was unanimous, but I think the majority agreed that we still went to the city to try to find the very best candidate for this job, and he has the home-field advantage, I can say that. But that's what we agreed upon, and here we are now. Have we changed our minds?
Well, sometimes you can't see the flaws because of the trees. I really believe you could. Like I said before, we're not hiring a vote or a Supreme Court judge, hiring a city manager, doesn't work out. You know, we do this process.
I think, yeah.
We have a hard exit here, I know it's coming back at Ottawa. But I don't know, if I'm sitting in Kyle's shoes, I'd be a little bit annoyed by saying, hey, a year ago you promoted me to the assistant, you gave me a raise, what have I done wrong?
No, I think he's mature enough and been around in public service long enough to recognize there are duties of a public body and elected officials that go through the motions, and, you know, I think everybody here probably believes he will compete on the home field.
But as our council say, he's, you sure enough don't understand it, but as our council says, it's our decision to go through this process.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to decide on something, so let's just, let's, let me get feedback from everyone right quick on where you stand.
Yeah, you had asked, you know, how people change their mind. I changed my mind from that meeting only because I had the opportunity to get to know him better. So right now, based on the work involved, and more importantly, what a good job I think Kyle would do, I would support selecting him.
Joey?
I am not afraid of the work. I think one thing that comes to mind is that we've got twelve resumes again right now. Doesn't it make sense that as those come in, they're distributed to the council, so we can start reviewing, I mean, you know, try to get a jump on that review process? I know we can't make any decisions or anything like that, because we have a dead, you know, we have a job to take up, and we can take the last one, but at least we can get a, or we jump on them. So that would kind of be a question back to the council, but I think it's our duty to review all the resumes, as I said earlier, and make a decision based on that.
Mike?
I agree. I mean, we should go through the process. From everything I heard about him, he'll probably walk all over the competition, but we can safely say, yeah, he walked all over the competition. We compared him against twelve, and without a doubt, this is the one to select, but we should go through the process.
Frank?
My feelings is Kyle's perfect candidate. I understand we have twelve resumes. Problem is now, are we going to waste those twelve resumes times by coming in here, doing an interview process where we probably know who's going to get the job? We're building up hopes, false hopes. I just don't think it's a decent service to the other people, so I would go with Kyle.
Bryce, where?
Through our due diligence, we go through the process.
That's where I'm leaning to, is going through the process. So I think that this is the right direction. If we are not comfortable with allowing the Citizens Advisory Board to do this job for us, then I'm all for us doing it ourselves. I was trying to help us, but let's do that right quick.
Yeah, I think we're going to go through the process, I think it's a great idea to use the advisory committee.
I agree, it is good to have them go through it.
Agreed, go advisory. There is no cut to what you're trying to do here or whatever, just what she wants, just we want to move with Kyle, everything else you've done is fine.
I understand. Glenn?
Advisory council, these are part of the process.
All right, so we will give those over to the Citizen Advisory Board, and we will let them give an initial ranking rather than giving us five, we'll just get scores from all of them. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
How many people are on the advisory committee?
These days?
Yeah.
Excellent. Good mix.
Don't we still have an opening?
Alternate now.
Alternate, that's right.
The page went to four.
Okay, now what about the timeline? Mike?
Well, again, the timeline, the catch is the twenty-third, that's the due date. Once you hit that due date, that's when, frankly, unfortunately, when I did it, and even allowing, say, I guess two days for interviews, I don't have a printout in front of me. It's still with start date potential of a thirty-day notice in August against Stat and AP's Marmara Project. I don't have a printout.
I think I actually did print that out.
I think there's a lot of that at the last meeting, though, that there's not a big concern because of the opportunity to go ahead and put Kyle in as the interim when the current city manager moves on, so that was...
Yeah, well, that was true. We did discuss that, and I just really, this was one of the action items, and I appreciate you doing that. And is there anything, obviously, what I'm going to ask you to do for me is take it back, and now that we understand the pre-interview process and what the Citizen Advisory Board's going to do, can you put that into this timeline and then get it back to all of us?
Absolutely, we'll do it. Were there any items, like items in parallel that could be done? See, everything looks sequential there, and I was just wondering.
It was sequential, once you hit the twenty-third, that was the real time, because everything else would be done at the same time.
Was there this fresh out of durations and...
Oh, yeah, and this project.
All right. And there was one more, we're to the job description of the city manager.
I went through that thing, and the original job description, you know, it had the job summary there, and I said, and why are we writing that? The job description is writing the city charter, Article Three, Execut. And there was actually some misalignment between the wording that was used in the job description and the charter. I think he's the chief administrator, or no, he's the chief executor, so we go back to him. I just kind of paste the charter duties in there, and under essential functions, I moved up to anything that I'm saying, and there are a couple other things in there you can kind of go through and read through at leisure, and some of them were in different places, and I tried to consolidate, go over across the route, put emphasis on demonstrated experience, not just this subjective knowledge or something. So if the guy says he's done something, well, what did you do? So that's all I did. And maybe go back and take a look at this thing, and that was just a post-pass, and spend a whole lot of time once I cut the pages and made my initial changes, and go back and figure this out. There was also a little hard with the job description, there was some question about the range of salary. I was able to pull up the old copy of the pure city here from when I went through the last hire, because Dan's old, I have a call-in updating, or I'm going to go back into that base, and this is going to be the city. These were the cities, the list was actually like seventy-six cities, and I pared it down into just the council manager forms of the cover. And the copy of the spreadsheet you have, the list is actually, the spreadsheet's about this long, and it goes into how many part-time employees, you have a water, utilities, you have police, smart, all that stuff, a library, that stuff. I just pared this down and sorted it strictly by population, taxes, levy, the number of employees, and the salary range, just to give us an idea of the range of salaries. And again, go back and look at taxes, levy, the size of the population, and the number of employees, if you should kind of come up with something, kind of salary range, I think is fair enough.
Yeah, I think the one thing that I see missing from this is cost of living, based upon where all of these communities are. We're in one of the most expensive areas in Florida, so...
I don't know if I have that data, that's why I basically have to look at the county and maybe the military, I don't know. I can go back and, I can actually send out the entire spreadsheet, maybe somebody can identify the field that you can kind of infer what the cost of living is in that area, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I'm not real sure. I'd like to see it, though. If you could pass that off to Patty and everyone gets a copy of it, that would be some good data to have. All right, do we want to run through these essential functions right quick, and make sure everybody's on the same page? Before we do, does anyone need a break? Seven or eight? Okay, so we are on essential functions. Why is this crossed out at the very above essential functions?
Actually, that was the part of the initial job summary.
Okay, well, we had it, all right, I got you.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, it was just, that was it.
Okay.
Again, it's all specified in the charter, so once you look at the job details, there it is.
Yeah, exactly. And that was my thoughts initially also, is that it's right there, and if we go changing too much, guess what?
Yeah, exactly.
It goes to an election.
And the stuff, the essential functions are just kind of the subjective kind of things, oh, yeah, what about this, what about that? The black and white stuff is right there in the charter.
Glenn, I'm curious, have you seen this yet?
Just a couple hours.
A couple hours ago, did you have time to digest it, or?
Yeah, I kind of looked through it, I mean, I guess I was a little like, what do we put the charter in there for? But that's, because typically, that's not in job description. But changing a couple of words around, I think that's fine. Yeah, I think they're okay.
Are we missing some important points?
No, I had edited the one that the consultant did a couple of years ago and put a couple additional things in there, so I think we've covered that. Changing the word from knowledge to demonstrated or experience, that makes sense.
And it's probably good that, you know, people don't realize that some cities don't have a strategic plan. We do, and we've been working off of it for, you know, objectives for the last few years. So, you know, that's something important that someone needs to know, but.
Some of the things I tried to stress was just saying, he's the tactical and routine every day guy. He gets stuff done. He worked with the council to develop the high-level organization of the boards and objectives, but he's clearly the guy who puts that into process and makes things happen. He takes lead in all implementation and stuff. He's the primary liaison for all of the agencies, the staff, and prepares coordination with all the other agencies, federal, state, county, and he's responsible for keeping the council staff informed, staff, and taking time to actually necessary. He monitors all the progress, costs, and keeps the council bothered of any significant deviations, as well as what's a good recommended course of action against background track. Tried to stress the communications skills. He's the prime, uh, ambassador, CEO of the residents, the county, and also our neighboring municipalities. Uh, he coordinates time to report while with staff and boards and attends to meetings. And the other stuff is just demonstrated experience.
I think it looks good. I think we need to be sure that we take these updates and revise the, um, evals that we do in February. You know, so while, while it's fresh on everyone's minds, we're not trying to do that last minute, you know? Because the evaluations do go hand-mean with the job description.
So this goes back to the initial pre-screen? Yes, ma'am? Anything on here? Translate over?
No, I think that, I think it, it dovetails. The pre-screen, you know, all we're trying to do is get this up on the website. So when the guy says, okay, I've got the application, I'm gonna go look and do my due diligence about what I'm getting myself into in Villa Beach. Well, here's the job description. I mean, it's hanging out right there in the charter, and, oh, here's some other things you ought to think about. Do you have strong communication skills? Do you have emergency disaster experience? Just that sort of stuff.
A valid Florida driver's license.
It's a blind. But it's necessary, right? I mean, absolutely.
Well, I, basically, you don't have to get one, but if you're, if you're a candidate, you may not live in Florida yet. You may not check the Florida box, um, but you're still a candidate, so does that automatically remove everybody that's from the state?
Well, this is a job description, right? So, you know.
It means you have to have one in the, uh, yeah.
Potentially get one, okay.
I don't think one.
Or maintain one.
Obtain one.
You know, maintain one.
Obtain and maintain.
Yeah, like an obtain.
Yeah, obtain.
It happens. You get a DUI, you're fooled, like, you can't work.
They're printing, they're printing.
If you're in the military, you get double indemnity. You get on both ways.
Yeah, I think this is great. I think it is gonna be important, though, that we do identify the salary range, um, because, you know, we say we have twelve applications or resumes. Some of those may go away when they find out what their range is. I don't, I don't know what the range is gonna be, but that could happen. And like Jody mentioned the other day, when we put the range in, everybody that applied says, well, they're gonna get the max because they're special.
I think so.
So then, a lot of times, you can include that in there, that say typically, the hiring range is between the minimum and ten percent or something like that, just so they know that's, that's not the case, so. But that's, I think we need to get that out of there, only because, you know, we don't wanna bring people in for interviews, or at some point, they need to know what the range is, so they can make a decision, is this a fit for them? Motivatingly.
I'll get that spreadsheet, I'll update that spreadsheet the best I can with the latest salaries.
Okay.
This is like eighteen, nineteen, twenty, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And I'll try to update that, get that out, and I guess Lloyd's got some experience there, and take a look there and come up with what.
Sure. Absolutely.
Action item.
Got it.
All right, so, uh, let's see. Go back to my list here. When can we have a salary range? Mr. Roberts?
Uh, so you, you've already got this data pulled?
I need to update the salary. Again, that's twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, it says, I've gotta call in, I've got a day or two to see, if not, I'll go back to the database personally and update it.
And I'll work through that, and I'll look as well to see what's out there.
Is that doable?
Yeah, that should be here enough, huh?
Well, we just got that, uh, interview on the other side of the state. That was what, one hundred and ten or something like that, the salary range that they're currently looking at. Why do we need to do all this data finding, you know, to set this out, you know, like?
Well, I think Lynn was trying to find something that was similar in size and all that kind of neat stuff. I, I don't know. I, I did see what Lynn sent us, I don't know. That was definitely done by an outside firm.
Yeah.
An executive placement firm, where they talked about how many O three's we have and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that was, that was, uh, I had a discussion with Ross again. He said, hey, you know, how much can a headhunter?
Right.
Fifteen, twenty grand, boy, I'd do this for you.
I don't trust headhunters. I've been burned, I've been burned by those guys too, many times.
Those you already know.
They're already looking, I can tell you that.
They are.
What's that?
They're, they're already asking about it.
The headhunters are?
Oh, yeah.
They're calling you daily, looking for your job.
That's because it's easy money, and they can send you anyone.
Yeah.
Did that one give a, a range? Do you remember, guys, or was it just?
Up to two hundred and ten.
Pardon?
Up to two hundred and ten.
Up two hundred and ten, that's what's, okay.
Twenty-two hundred and fifty, where are you?
Up to two hundred and ten.
But it mean, I haven't seen because I don't have a usual.
It was something.
So that's a nice way to say it, because that way they know, that's it, that's the maximum, that's the ceiling, and I'm going over that, whatever our number is.
I can tell you, Reddington, when they advertised, they went, the range was two hundred and thirty-five, they ended up paying a hundred and eighteen.
Yeah. Well, do you remember what the minimum was? Or just, it just said up to?
Ninety.
So it's ninety to two hundred and some?
Two hundred and thirty-five.
Oh, a hundred and thirty-five. I thought you said two.
Yeah.
Have any of the rest?
Heart attack.
Have any of the resties come back with a salary range requested?
Some, some have a hundred and forty, couple, right, Patty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was eighty-ten, they ended up with a hundred and eighteen thousand? And that was about when? How long ago?
Month ago.
So if you look to this spreadsheet here, and you look at the bottom there, and you look at the number of residents, you look at the taxes levy, and you start looking at the number of employees, you can see that, you know, down towards the bottom, thirty full-time employees with the taxes levy are kind of in our range. The number of residents, you know, nineteen hundred to eighteen, twenty-nine.
Hundred and eighty, right there.
You're bouncing around, oh, one hundreds to one twenties. Again, that's managing a lot, a lot more people.
Yeah, the mileage rate doesn't necessarily mean a whole lot. It's, it's pretty much worthless data.
Yeah, usually when we release on civilians, that people get, uh, number of employees directly supervised, and that's just right to that F D E.
So this Villa Beach guy, I see on here, but again, that was back in seventeen, right? So you guys probably came in like a ten percent raise every year? Three.
And I missed some, which is, uh, I don't know.
They'll pay you one of these.
Always.
I think you had a point, is the number of full-time equipment after ten years.
All right, uh, by Friday, I have something. All right, just remember, don't send anything directly.
So Lynn, do you have a feel for what the up-to salary would make sense based on your knowledge, or what you know what goes on around there?
I, I think the range is probably somewhere between ninety and a hundred and ten.
Okay.
A hundred and fifteen, maybe. Play a little bit.
I would, I would guess it's probably on the higher side of the scale, just because of the housing and fuel and everything else, and how the cost of living is going.
High side.
Reddington Beach just ran an ad, and they're a pretty.
Hundred and eighteen.
Comparable, you know, city to us. I mean, I know they have more, uh, commercial properties, every little bigger community, but certainly, it's a good comparable. So, I mean, if we're looking for a range, that would be, I mean, you guys disagree, but I think that would be a good range to look at.
And you said they had advertised up to one thirty-five, but they hired at one eighteen?
Right.
Well, I don't think we need to put one thirty-five on anything. I was just saying. All right, well, give us something back, and then we'll, we'll do from there. All right, so what's the next step in this process? When is the Citizen Advisory Board meeting again?
Well, I would think we'd wait till all the, after, I think we should probably have a meeting with them to kind of lay this out, what you've laid out, uh, and we can do that rather quickly, and then once all, once the deadline passes, we get all the applications. Patty's putting them together in a, a logbook, then we'll give them a package, and then they will have some time to review them and, and take them and have some meetings to score.
Okay.
I would suggest that somewhere along the line, before you start bringing people in, you do a phone interview, 'cause you may pick something up with who, you know, whether it's them or someone else, uh, and then, of course, you need to do the background investigation, because, you know, I'm sure I'm fine.
Well, and if you hire them before you do that investigation, now you're on the hook. You're stuck with that person.
You make sure you do the background. And, of course, Patty will probably do the due diligence of the Google of people, and you'll have some articles that will be attached.
So is, is for as, uh, having a pre, pre-interview with, uh, before bringing someone in, what's gonna be the best legal way of doing this without actually, I mean, do, do we have a public meeting and just do a Zoom and then give everyone the address? And you have to do that with every single candidate?
Yes. I mean, I would be exempted, but I think, no, I think we actually have to do what?
Well, if, if we're wanting to pre-screen before we bring them in, and, you know, have a, an on-the-phone interview with them, um.
Once we're at the shortlist?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we can, from a specific address, we can, we can probably just, we'll have that as a public record, but it'll be exempt, um, at this point. I think we're okay with that. Yeah, I think we're okay with that, exempting that, so you wouldn't necessarily have to ask some of those questions during the Zoom hearing. I would highly recommend that you do a Zoom interview.
Yeah, the same here.
You just wanna see the person, you wanna see how they respond to your question.
Okay, well, maybe we could just have, uh, maybe we just have one person who's actually asking questions, and the rest of us are just sitting there watching, and, and then that way, we, we have canned questions, we ask everyone, and we just look, look at the, can you do Zoom?
Yeah.
All right.
So we referring to, that's the final interview?
No, no, this would be before they were brought in, I think. It's just, okay, we've narrowed down these five, whatever, and we just have a phone call to take a look at your face and see if we have, if we've changed our minds about any of them.
Yeah, briefly, yeah, we talked earlier about the timeline. Right now, we got that listed. Uh, Monday, uh, May twenty-third, you receive, obviously, the deadline, you got those in, but the initial call, that's the, the committee, I mean, it's, I put five days, um, so it's like from Wednesday, five, twenty-five through the thirty-first, and they call it down. I also have three days in there to give a shortlist. At that point, the background and references check goes on, that's a five-day process, and then I put aside two days for interviews. So this is after it comes through, uh, committee, and it's now in our hands. And then goes the final selection, contract negotiation, hiring, it's all like a five-day process. So we can, you know, obviously, it'll adjust.
I think, I think it's just, I think it's gonna take a little longer. I think you're compacting too much.
Okay, no, I'll, I'll talk to you then, and.
Until we know what the, until we know what the number is of applications, you know, and, and they have to have some time.
Right, and you're gonna bring them in, if they're coming in from out of state, then you're gonna have to do all those arrangements and things.
Yeah, so it's, your, uh, Gantt chart there is actually a sliding scale.
Oh, absolutely. No, I'll, I'll, I'll come in tomorrow and start, you know, put more rational thought behind it, come with the experts. Thanks.
I think when we do the Zoom call, you might have a leading person asking questions, and then, you know, comes to mind that Lloyd and Lynn might be good, you know, people to ask the questions, and one charter, you know, charge would be asking, and another one maybe do the follow-up or something like that, so.
I like you.
And the rest of us just observe, right?
Which one do you want to be?
I'll be the badass. I was saying, you're afraid, Frank's good at questions, too, huh?
And if all goes well, maybe we'll have a time to where we, we interview everyone the same night. And while it's all fresh in our mind, and, uh, and then we'll make a, a final decision of if we're moving forward with background checks, and then call them in for the, the final interview, and we make a decision. Sound like a plan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What are your thoughts, Lynn?
No, that's, you've got a good plan. I think you're, you're right on the spot.
Okay. Okay, well, um, any other?
I have one thing, not about the city manager.
Okay, hold, hold on, let's go back to.
Uh, I'm just looking at the, at the planning task here, okay? So we talked about updating this job description, this stuff in red, and, uh, we talked about the salary range. Do you want to include that salary range in the job description before we put it up on the website?
Will we update it?
I think it should be on the website, for sure.
Okay, so that's, I'm just kind of thinking out loud for the deadline, or that, that'll be probably Friday, the end of next week sometime, probably.
Updating that ad may very well remove several candidates also.
Well, you're gonna, you always get the shotguns, and they'll say, well, this is what I make now, that's, and that's what, you know, you're gonna get that. There's people that just, if they're not working, they just send, you know, I've had.
Even their work process, they, so we, you know, just, you know, have a resume.
And I've had a couple of false calls. Yeah, so.
It's, it's the step line of the theory. I'm making this much, therefore I should be making this much, then you get there, I'm making this much, I should be making.
I know there's also been some discussion between you and the city manager about updating the hiring contract, so I'm thinking that's something that's probably comparable, it's not necessarily support your, has to be done before the negotiations is.
And we'll have a copy for you to, to look at it whenever you want it, the equivalent, you know, next, whatever time period you tell.
Anything else on the city manager position? All right, any other general business? I have the addendum to employment agreement for you.
We would put that on the next agenda.
What's that?
We would put that on the next agenda for your purposes.
Okay, all right. Uh, did everyone receive a copy of this? Take a look right quick and, uh, see if there's any comments about it. Any comments?
No comment. I have what to approve.
Okay, so we will have this on the, in the regular council meeting?
This isn't, it says travel expense, but it includes lodging, travel expense? I don't need lodging. I have a place here.
Traditionally, travel expenses include some lodging. That's why it's down, we made it broad in case something changes for Lynn, so that you didn't have to.
He gets kicked out.
They got that bug out.
That's it!
That's a lovely party gift for you.
Looks like it's got a mallet on it.
All right, any other, Lynn, you had something you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, I just, I spoke about the code fines. And I, the gentleman wanted to give me two thousand dollars, Patrick Drummond. I passed on what the council said, fifty percent. And he came back to me and said, of course, he was still mad about the hundred-dollar landlord fee from three years ago. But he wanted me to provide him a final invoice with the fifty percent. So, you know, if I get some consensus from the council, it's okay, then if he does give us the fifty percent, then I'll validate it at the consummation. That amount is fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
My vote would be to invoice them and get fifty percent. It's going to save us a lot, partying.
Yep, I, I will go along with that, but I still want to look into the services, just to see, not for this one, let's, let's look this one.
Services?
Where they, where they buy the lien.
Where they what?
Where they buy the lien.
The narrative of that, that company that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I haven't found the business card yet and I haven't looked, but I will, I will get at least two comments because I have two cards for them.
Okay.
Not, not with this particular bill, but I think we just want to look into the future and make sure that we're getting the most. If we can get sixty percent, it's worth it. Everybody okay with that?
My, my concern with this buying the lien, all of these are still active cases, so there's not a solid lien yet. I mean, there's still incurring costs.
There's a, there's a, what we do is, is they increase, we have to give them thirty days after we give them a new invoice. And then we can leave the property. So, he's got significant lien, probably in the, I'll say, twenty-six thousand dollars, roughly twenty-five thousand. He's got a lien already on the property and he knows that.
He wants to give you two thousand?
No, he wanted to give me two thousand.
Yeah, I bet.
Well, his position was, as he said, that we're offering two thousand because that's really probably all you spent in time and energy. And I'm thinking, no, plus the headache, no. So.
But for instance, the gentleman whose house has been under construction forever, that's an ongoing problem, right? So selling his lien doesn't solve the problem, you've got to get to an end on the problem.
There may be, they may have something in place that covers that, then I.
Yeah, his, the house that's under construction.
Usually, we, we wouldn't bring that case to you until they come to compliance or there's a point where they're just going to abandon the property. Normally, we look for compliance to stop the lien, and then you have a lien sitting out there, the amount out there, then it's up to council if you want to negotiate.
What's a general building permit here? How long do you have ground breakage?
You have, by our code, you have eighteen months, but you can get a six-month extension. Okay. This is year four.
But this is numerous permits, right? This is numerous permits is, is the problem, is that it's, it's missing specific steps, right?
Yeah, yeah, what, what he agreed to when we took him to the magistrate and a year ago last January. We gave him, the magistrate gave him a drop-dead date and the fine was, if I recollect, seventy-five or a hundred dollars a day if you don't complete it by thirty-one August. He wanted thirty September, but she said, no, we're going in the middle because you've been back and forth with them. Because the city or me, I said, I'll give you six additional months, but if he doesn't finish it, then the lien holds. At that time, he gave us a spreadsheet to say, by this day, I will have rough-in electric, rough-in plumbing, rough-in, you know, inspection. And the magistrate charged him for each one of those line items, twenty-five dollars a day if he didn't make it. And he didn't make anything. Till just recently.
In his consideration, has he had problems with the county coming out to inspect?
No, 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 he hasn't. It's, it's just the whole, now, I will say there, they are, over the last two or three weeks, he's, he's got someone else handling it and his brother has evidently took over the job. He's trying to get this house done. So the story right now is July, but who knows? But he is totally aware that the code fine is what it is now, it's about a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Is he married or living there?
Yeah.
Should we come and work a deal out with him if he's done by July, certain date, we can wash away a lot of these fines? Because he's currently a resident?
Yeah, I don't know, that's, my thoughts are, he's breaking the rules.
Well, I understand it, but he.
Giving him fifty percent off is one heck of a discount.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, we've negotiated, well, I think you are a council. We've negotiated with other people and produced them over the years. But we've always pretty much used that right around fifty percent rule and said, hey, you broke the rules, so.
The biggest problem with that particular bill is that he's got some angry neighbors. They are, they are sick and tired of it. They have, they have not liked this project pretty much from day one. And it just seems like it's, it's gone forever. And I, whenever I was knocking on doors, people were saying, can you do something about that and make this guy finish?
What if we put a fire under his feet? Does that not solve both of our problems by saying, July's not too far away? So, he gets it done by July, you know, it was what, twenty-six, you said?
Hundred and twenty-six. I was going to say, if that doesn't put a fire on you, I don't know what.
What I'm saying is that a hundred and twenty-six, he might not say, might be like the Titanic, it's not going to be resurrected, so I'm not going to put an effort in. Usually, what you say to those individuals is, we'll address it once you've completed, so you're in compliance. Then council will consider everything. And that's how, the best way you can do it is to stop the fines. I mean, I've been dealing with code enforcement for about thirty years.
I understand, if shit is sick so bad, you want to give him something to.
Well, if he's homesteading, it.
No, he's not homesteading.
Oh, well.
Well, not yet, but he might.
He might. Then you probably have a lien and then.
Well, no, he, the, he's got to get a CO.
Right, do we have a lien now?
Yes.
Okay.
And then last week, we talked about this.
Well, he's, he's, to, to get a CO, he's going to have to take care of the code fines as well.
Well, what's that? Oh, okay. Yeah, so you're going to be in the driver's seat.
And, and when we last spoke about this, you were going to send letters to the rest of them, we have three others that.
I understand, we're in the driver's seat now, but I think the car's out of gas, is what I'm saying. I'd like to just see the project get done.
Well, we've been trying that for.
I understand, but we're saying he's got to put something on the carrier at the end of his day.
Well, I, he, he was told that he could negotiate. I mean, I get a phone call two or three days a week now from his, not from him, but from his person that's kind of taken over the job, is there any way to stop the fines? I says, yeah, you can stop the fines. So, you know, when they get a rough-in, now at least, they're calling us and saying, we got a rough-in and then we could verify with the county. But that's all he's got.
So this is the one with the experience where he hit the deadline and then he threw out all the fiddly debt, he had to stall to meet the deadline. So, at this point, he's kind of flagrantly flouting the rules.
Yeah, he, he's been a struggle. Even the county thinks he's been a struggle.
But right now, the only one we can solve is the one that you've got, maybe the fifty percent, the rest of them are still in.
Yeah, the others are really small, you know, in the scheme of things.
I think they.
This house on the corner, that's, it's getting a fine every day now because it didn't require.
For some reason, they all think that they can negotiate and almost completely get out of it and.
I don't think Beller Beach has ever, I can remember one that was back in the late two thousand eight, two thousand nine. I think we gave him fifty percent and they paid. And actually, it was just around the corner from Hugh Frank, where Christie lives down. And they wouldn't comply, wouldn't comply, but when they came for their CO, it was, it was a problem and they couldn't get it till they agreed to something.
I have no problem working with, with anyone, but whenever you're just abusing, abusing your neighbors and abusing our city, that's, that's a big problem.
My biggest concern is appeasing the neighbors, but you know what I'm saying? Because they're the ones that go ahead every day.
Oh, yeah, I've heard from pretty much all of them.
I've actually had a couple of phone calls too about it, but hopefully, this will motivate them and this will be finished soon.
So if you get them cards, I'll tell them.
I will. Any other unfinished business?
Yeah, I want to talk to, I want to talk about beach re-nourishment. What's going on with beach re-nourishment? Are they moving forward or not?
No, it's, there's no funding in twenty-four currently. What the issue is, is easements. Clearwater and us have all easements. Indian Rocks doesn't, Indian Shores doesn't. They, they can probably tell you who, who doesn't because they've talked about it. But the Corps of Engineers, just to give you a little background, usually they work on a two-year budget. And in their budget, right now, there's no money in the next two years, which is twenty-three.
So then I'm going to make a proposal, since we don't have anything moving forward with beach re-nourishment, that we take back part city parking.
But you can't.
Why? And what's that?
Ten years.
Can we, have you reviewed the contract, the agreement?
We have talked about city park.
Uh, Morgan Park, have you ever tried to drive down there?
Oh, no, I talked to you before about that.
You're not going to know that, you're not going to access Morgan Park as a resident? Or at least take back, take back a couple of spaces because we don't have any
We don't.
Residential parking at Morgan Park, it's always filled up with.
Right, but it's a, it's, was put there for the parking spaces, were for the re-nourishment. And we've been around about, with this, about the county and according to the county person, John Bishop and the state, it's ten years from the last re-nourishment, which the last re-nourishment was eighteen, I believe. So, now, if there's no re-nourishment in
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-eight, then.
And I don't think that's going to happen.
There must be an agreement somewhere.
Six-year cycle?
Not with, not with the city, it's with.
Every Corps of Engineers has a strategic plan that they're supposed to be following, but they're not.
They're, they're changing the rules.
Yeah, so, does she have the right, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm on your side here, to do what she wants to do? Because I, I think you are, you're right. If they're going to change the rules on us, can we?
At least take back some of it, take back half of it, so our residents have somewhere to park.
Nine o'clock Saturday, that was packed. There was a car, it's probably.
I mean, you know, then those people that are up in arms about the umbrella ordinance, at least have somewhere they can go to park their car and go out to our beach with an umbrella.
We can go back to the county, but this, actually, the county's the one, you know, we don't, technically, the city of Beller Beach doesn't have a contract. The county has that with the state and Morgan.
But it's not, so we own the parking, the county has given our parking away, we haven't given it away.
Well, we gave it away except.
We gave it up, we gave it up to get that sand and now the, now the Corps of Engineers has changed the rules required one hundred percent across, up and down the entire beach. Well, if that's the case, we will never, ever get beach re-nourishment. And so, and the reason why, that's, is right across the street from us over there. But Beller Shore will not give up their parking lots for re-nourishment. And there's no need for them to, because you put it north, you put it south, guess what? You've got sand.
But it moves anyway.
If we're not getting beach re-nourishment, Indian Rocks ain't getting it. That, all you're saying is getting shorter and shorter by the year.
And Indian Rocks is part of the, of the problem because they can't get all the easements.
Right. So now, do we work something out with Beller Shore's by letting access to those three lines? You know what I'm saying? But not letting access to those three.
Yeah, the, well, the problem is, is that the Corps of Engineers, they want it all or none. That's what they, that's what they do. It's all the way to John's Pass and you go south of John's Pass and they're getting it because they got their act together and got everything signed.
If you go to any of us council meetings, there is some irate kind of.
I know, I know.
Because that beach is getting smaller and smaller.
I drove right past it yesterday and was shocked. There was water, we were at high tide, but there was water at the several seawalls on the way down.
Yeah, if you, from fourth, from third, just almost fifth, it's really been there.
And the, the big city and the county, they've, they've all been discussing various ways that they would try to do it. But ultimately, without the fat of the money, it's, it's not feasible. And I, this is one of the things that I did while I was in the, in the last session was I organized a big petition. And I was asking Chris and Rubio and Scott to help us, to step in and, and just see if they could, if they could get the Corps of Engineers to work on the easements later and let's get it done. And they didn't even care. Rubio, Chris, Scott, they didn't care. Nope, one person got back to me, but it wasn't one of them. It was, it was some aide or something, but that was signatures. All the mayors up and down the beach, including the ones in St. Pete and Treasure Island, where it's, it's not even any big deal to them. And I got the county involved also and they reviewed everything and they sort of twisted it a little bit, but it was still an acceptable solution. Just give us the sand and then we'll work on the easements and we'll see what happens next year. They just didn't give us enough time to really get this together and.
And that goes with, with her argument, because that strategic plan was written years ago about how many increments a sand.
I agree.
And then they just come in and say, oh, we're not going to do a hundred, we're going to do a hundred percent easement free, and they've won it for life too, so. I, I'm so.
Well, I think the way that, that, that ten years is, okay, you get it done one time and we get your property for ten years. So, they got it, they got, they got their ten years. And just because we can't get them to do it again before that ten years is up.
What's supposed to be earmarked for twenty twenty, it was, what was it, like, two thousand and eighteen, twenty twenty-four, I think two thousand and thirty or the next one? You know what I'm saying? So they're not fulfilling.
Right, they, they, they just don't want to do it, is what it is.
Well, and, and so then, back to the strategic plan, we probably should start researching, putting in some barriers to keep our sand in place, you know, let's put some.
That's a, that's a bigger problem. Now you have a ten-year environmental study and then you have, I think you have to study. Now you have a ten-year environmental study and then you have, I think you have to study...
A lot of these hotels, they were doing it in the past.
Well, it's different. It's not, and it's not out, it's not there.
I'm not, I'm just saying, put a jetty on our beach, so any sand that flows down or, you know, because the sand moves, right?
You need to remove your quarter water jetty. Once that's done, you get the scene of transportation.
Oh, it'll still move. I mean, I've lived here all my life and this beach has never been without sand. It might have been shorter, but it comes and goes, right? I mean, that's just mother nature.
All of our sand is at John's Pass. That's where it's all gone to.
They don't come back.
They're complaining about...
If you get very extroverted. They are complaining about it.
It's a lose. No one pays out to pay it out.
Too much sand. In fact, you now have to go, I would say, almost, probably a half a mile out to get around, to go into the inlet. You can't follow the beach and turn right into John's Pass.
See, they, they don't dredge out far enough where a lot of it just reeds back.
Right.
Well, just, the county is, the county is trying to talk to them about doing portions of it, but that hasn't, they, they don't seem to get an answer because, because as an example, us and Clearwater, we got all our easements.
Well, I think they're, they're relying too much on Chris to get something done for them and...
Well, he's probably checked out.
I haven't seen any, any progress.
Yeah, he's, he's probably checked out because he's doing something else.
Didn't you give me a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
That Rubio and signed, and Chris had signed?
No, it was a letter that the mayors had signed to say...
Oh, the mayors had signed. Oh, you were asking Rubio and those guys in the letter to, oh, my God, I don't know.
Yeah, there was a letter coming to Big C that was sent to him.
Yeah, that was well done.
I will tell you, Peralos County's not giving up. They're, they're doing everything they can, you know? And that's the latest that John Bishop, the person is...
My question is, is, and I know this is not anything anyone ever wants to hear, but what would an assessment be on every home in the county to get our beach re-nourished?
That would be, I don't know.
You can do it privately.
Well, it, it wouldn't be enough for Beller Beach to do it.
Well, I agree, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, if we just did it ourselves...
We could disconnect the...
But, but I think actually still the Corps of Engineers has to be involved.
Right, they did because...
But see, we would now have funds. Instead of waiting on federal funds, we would just pay for it ourselves.
They're fine with that. You're just running paperwork through them and that's okay. Get your crage, your workers and knock yourself out as long as we approve the signature on the paperwork. But assessment on potentially the businesses, you know, everybody that profits from the tourism industry. You know, we keep, not us, the IRB, the insurance, keep building every square inch that you can carry down into the lower, six plexes up or whatever, where these people are going to go. And we really should get our neighbors because as you see in their council meetings, you know, 28th Street from Indian Rocks, you're not going to sell, you're heading towards that, you see a vacant area. So that beach is small and small and it was small the last couple of weeks because we had to find ties, but there was less...
These areas with the commercial kind of prizes, are they charging any use fee or tax or that sort of thing?
I think it's just a, just a bad tax because...
Yeah, TDC, a portion of the TDC's money, tourist development council's money, goes to beach re-nourishment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a percentage of it and that's really the bad tax. Part of it goes to that, part of it goes to some infrastructure projects like in the past, they paid, they paid part of the debt from the trough, they've given the stuff for...
Is that then funded to the, the county, state or fed?
It goes to the county's church development. And they have a council that kind of...
And how do we get it back to re-nourishment?
A portion of it is re-nourishment.
Then you supply the bottom Corps of Engineers when they're doing it.
Yeah, it's part of the cost share they, they pay. The state gives us a portion, Corps of Engineers gives us a portion and...
Do you know what the overall, just average cost of re-nourishment is?
It's, I couldn't tell you what ours would cost, but it's...
Well, I mean, it's, obviously, it's millions, but what, what are we, you know, what are we getting from the Fed for, for the project?
I can find that out for you.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because doesn't the county have a huge reserve right now? Don't they have this just crazy reserve and we're trying to figure out how to get money for our beaches?
Yeah, the state subsidizes it also.
Yeah, so just some things to throw out there.
I'll find out what...
So if the county did it and the state and the federal government, do we still have to open the parking lot? Do you think you can get it down by the shore or something like that?
Well, I think if the county, if the county was involved, they would, they would demand it anyway. They would demand it to be open.
Yeah, but I get back to, all of the parking does not need to be given to the residents of Largo and I, I'll argue that point.
Well, can't we do one side, one side?
Well, I think, I think...
It has to do with distance from the beach. You see, we, we tried at one time to say, well, City Hall, we got hundreds of places here, but there's within a, you've got to be within a quarter mile of this. It's kind of like the Marinas and another one. That's why we had to put in the bicycle racks.
And that's a federal rule, right?
Yeah, it's federal, yeah.
Okay, and, and that's why they're asking for these easements is so that they can control more and more the...
Well, you can still park in Morgan Park with Beller Beach.
Sticker.
Yeah, no charge.
If there's a space available.
Well, then why don't we charge what they're worth in charge?
That's why I always say just leave the price.
They, they charge fifty dollars a day to park by the beach, seven hundred thousand a day.
So that's been my position is keep increasing the price until they're coming.
We, we raised it recently and even put a, a time limit on it. It's not...
It's still not that much.
It's not that much, but it's, it's comparable to all-day parking. If you come back and keep feeding the meter every twenty hours...
The guy says, beach gets shorter as I've got to look at the distance and travel.
Get true, yeah. Pretty soon, you're parking in the water.
And, and ours is the highest per hour, right?
But I think we could get more money. I mean, if it's that big of a budget number, we could jack it up some more.
And you make it ten an hour, thirteen an hour. Until they stop under the threshold of paying.
Yes.
And I, you'll still have a company.
Yes.
And you know this already, but people who come in at nineteen, that's parked there and put their foot on the gas. Because as soon as you come up with nineteen, you take one step to the right, you're up to the other beach.
There's been a time or two hours...
But you don't have that. So we bring all the kids out there, so not like...
I'm sure that happens.
Good, we're...
Okay, what do you have, Mr. Gunn?
I, I just, I've been reading Mr. Surratt's emails. Is there a G O plan for the Jet Ski Blues Crew?
Yeah, that's what I was just reading, yeah.
It's been taken care of. The first time we heard about it was last, I got an email from Mr. Surratt last, I think it was Sunday, maybe Saturday, a week ago. Monday morning, I sent code enforcement. He gave him the notice that we normally give people five days to get rid of it. Who is it? Mr. Surratt.
Mark Surratt.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Mark, yeah.
Got the email.
Surratt probably just emailed.
No, I didn't get the email.
Yeah, we forwarded his original one to you. Because he sent it to the wrong email address originally. He had David.Gatz and we forwarded that to you last week.
Okay.
And then over the weekend, he sent an email to everybody, just this past weekend. He's claiming it's been going on for a month. Well, why didn't you say something before that? He said something about it a week ago, Saturday or Sunday. And I, I responded to him and I called him on the phone and told him that we would take care of it. We sent code enforcement out and as of Saturday, it was gone. So we'll keep monitoring it. I did catch a short-term rental Friday afternoon at this end of town on Third Street and we're going to take them to code.
Well, you're bringing that up. I had a brief meeting with the fire chief today and that was one of the things that I brought up. Is there something that we can add to these non-short-term rental homes that may make it inconvenient for the, the owner of the property to, to, they're going to set up shop in Beller Beach. Obviously, they have a fine system, but with what Beller Beach is charging right now for short-term rentals, they're just continuously doing it. This is one of the things I wanted to know is, is there something we can tack onto their home? A requirement that we could put into our code where if you're caught doing this, well, then maybe you have to, you know, you have to amp up your protection.
I don't think you want to. You don't want to mess with that short-term rental thing.
No, no, it's not a short-term rental code. I'm, I'm just saying, if you're a business...
Oh.
You see what I'm saying? So it's just, I'm, I'm asking questions. I just wanted to see if there's anything that we can do to make it sort of difficult.
I think by doing that, we're acknowledging though that they're short-term rental, right? And they have a different requirement than you do next door because you're, so I think you need to be really careful about doing that. Maybe we look at increasing our fines if you're caught short-term.
Well, we're at the max for the third, for five thousand is as big as we can go.
The most we can do.
Because of our size of it.
And you're saying the amount of money they're making on the short-term rental is so big, they don't care about the fine?
The first offense is not that much.
Thousand, fifteen hundred actually.
So max is at a block?
Yeah.
So why can't we just make the first term, first time five thousand?
Well, we're not the ones that, the magistrate's the one that does that. We don't assess the fine, but if you remember, it's, it's probably been a couple of years ago, I, I did research and raised it to the maximum. Because I found out that, I guess in Miami Beach, you can get twenty thousand and they're doing it, so...
Well, I talked to, I talked to Lynn at the end of Merle's work session because a couple of neighbors complained about a house and he, I think he was saying, now they, you have to register all your people on the lease, okay? And he registered like three families, but after that ninety-four, two thirteen rentals, one family unit shall occupy, well, that's what our code calls them. So can we, before that lease comes in, can we restrict it to just one family? Because just had an incident up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, two hundred people, one dwelling, okay, was that man shooting on a VRBO. So what I'm saying is, some of these people just don't give a hank.
Well, and, and I think the problem with, with doing that is that you're, again, we're looking at short-term rentals and applying something that you wouldn't apply to yourself. So you want to have your cousins and their family come down and stay with you. Well, now that's two families in your home.
That's fine, but what I'm saying is, what they were doing was this family would be in it for a certain amount of time and then another family would be in it for a certain...
I guarantee you that's happening here right now.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that one family's vacated, so instead of renting it for ninety days a family, I'll take it for three weeks, you take it for three weeks, you take it for... And all these names are now on the lease, so...
And that's happening in your neighborhood, in fact.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's the point is that we do have, and we did put those provisions when we did the code review, what is a family unit, I remember talking about that, what is a family unit and how do we decipher that? And so we've tried our best and you're right, if you're listing three families as a renter, that doesn't work. Now, if you own the house, you have whoever you want. You don't, you're not registered as a rental, so...
Yeah, I'm not trying to, mom, pa, or sisters out there, but I'm talking about three different names and sure, I got three daughters that are married to a...
But you own the house and you're not listed, you're not going to get a rental for it.
Yes, and I invite you to complete the bottom section nine and four.
And we went around with the one you're talking about and, you know, he paid, what, forty-five hundred dollars in fines?
I actually think he was, I think the owner actually was there this week.
Yeah, he was.
No.
Him and I, very close relationship now.
Yeah.
From hours on the phone from Minnesota.
And I was trying to get us a transmission work.
They're searching for a lot of short-term rentals, cruising the web and looking for stuff and they can see the patterns and stuff and identify short-term rentals and they go to the cities and say, okay, you know, you pay a fee for the service to monitor it. They do all the research and connect the dots for it.
About twelve or fifteen thousand dollars.
You split the allowance or something.
I looked into it.
One last thing for Lloyd, when you were with Swift Mud, did you deal with grants?
We had a, we actually used to do it independently within the departments and then the district hired a grants coordinator, new position, had to get it approved. Interestingly enough, it was the niece of one of our board members. So everybody thought, wow, that was kind of tricky, but she did a great job. So she was one hundred percent focused on grants and sometimes that's what it takes. And she bought in, brought in far more money than her salary was, so it was a clear, good thing to do.
At some point, my thinking is, we want to have a call session with you about what are some of the ninja secrets for writing or crafting a grant to get past some of the issues for demographics or wherever. I've got to think you can build a grant that might get us out of that, hey, well, you're in Beller Beach, you don't deserve this.
And that's usually what it is because they're all, they're all geared towards low-income housing and building the economy.
But I think it's worth a try. I think we should try to sit down and try to craft a couple of these things. Again, it, it, grants are a focus thing. You can't just wait for necessarily a point of luck. You've got to be out there actively seeking these things and saying, okay, what can I qualify for? What can we put a spin on in our demographics that, hey, you know, our average age, you know, the number of elderly or, or something like that, you know, a different spin. You've seen that. You talk about the elderly aspect.
Yeah, CBDG, you know, well, Swift Mud's got cooperative funding, you know what I'm talking about, but we went in to try to qualify for that and they, you know, some of this cooperative funding group came out, spent a day with us. We didn't meet it. We went, they actually told us, I wouldn't waste my time because you wouldn't get any money from us. And it's mainly because their spin on it was, we're not a regional system. And then when you talk about others, it's cost benefit ratio and if you don't make the one to one, you're kind of stuck in the middle. And, you know, Seventh Street, I think we were point five to one, you know, in the cost benefit ratio, well, you, you're, you're going nowhere. We put it in, but we didn't get anywhere.
In, in the past, we, we, we've had this conversation, seemed like it comes up every couple of years or something like that, or maybe after every election, but I think the three things we were looking at, one was hiring somebody and trying to justify that. Is there a return on investment of having a full-time person? The other one was looking for a company. That's what they do. They just, all they do is look for, look for grants and try to figure it out. And then the, the third is rely on who we have now. And occasionally we get lucky and occasionally, most of the time we don't because we don't, we don't qualify. But the, the question I've always had is, do we know where to look? That's the problem is, where do you, where do you find grants for poor old Beller Beach? Because everybody else thinks that we're not worthy of these grants.
Part of the problem too is we don't know what we don't know.
That's right.
And that's where I think we need...
Buckle down and get focused.
We need professional help.
But once you start taking state and federal money, you open yourself up.
To give up your parking.
Sure.
Give up your parking.
No.
The same reason we didn't take, yeah, we, we...
But yeah, that broken, I mean, we like the secluded, that's why I think, we'll secluded hardaway community.
Right.
Start getting grant money.
You see, we qualified to have the whole park completely redone, but at the end of the day, would we have ever spent that much money in the first place? And that was where, unfortunately, Kyle worked on it. And it didn't do it hurt because it was too much money anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah. So does anybody have anything else? I think.
I think, are there any action items for all these little miscellaneous things we talked about and should we put that on the board so they don't just get buried like?
Just review the.
You know, the, the beach parking, your grants and stuff, you know, well, we talked about all the, you know, city manager stuff, but do we need to put some of these things down?
Well, the, the nourishment, you know what? I don't really know.
I'm more, I'm more concerned, I don't care about.
You're, you're concerned with the parking?
Yes.
Well, that's a, that's a legal issue, I believe.
We'll have to get a hold of the, Lynn and I could work on getting a hold of if there's an actual agreement. If not, then have to meet with people from the county.
Well, I mean, what's the consequence of, why are we agreeing? Are they going to take the sand back?
No, they were coming in to bring in adjunctive action against the city.
So they wouldn't, so we couldn't take the parking places, right?
Right. I mean, that's why I'd rather talk to the county first.
Yeah.
And then we could come back and we could say, hey, told us not to pound sand. And then you guys could say, well.
We're not going to ask the question. We're going to pay forgiveness.
You provided the sand.
Okay. Just so it's official, who's contacting the county?
I will.
Okay.
John Bishop is the one.
And then this, everything keeps coming back to you, but the, we were talking about the boats and you're going to contact somebody about that?
I've already talked to the sheriff about getting me pictures and registration so we can find out who the owners are. And what I'm suggesting initially is we just send them a, a letter of maybe outlining what our code says and we'll see if we can't get rid of them to start with.
And I'm calling all the mayors up and down the beach just to see what, what they're doing.
Or if any of us are out, we can send you.
What?
If any of us are out, we can just send you an up close photo with the numbers on it.
Yeah, I asked the sheriff to get, to start right here. Because if you go down, most of the time there's not a bunch. They, they may come for a short period and then they're gone. They're mostly right here. It'd be a hell of a conveyor belt.
And that there were no action items on the short-term rentals, right?
No. I, I just gave you that we got another one Friday night. I made the first contact with him and I had the sheriff say that it was on duty go and set up a report. And I've already set up a notice violation and the hearing is scheduled. I'll wait for them a couple of weeks and we'll keep monitoring that one.
And I'm also supposed to contact the St. Pete Sector Commander.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else that I've not covered that we did?
I'll just update the strategic plan, update the salary, make the sounds.
And I'll update, I'll talk to Lynn tomorrow and update, update the schedule and get that back out to you for consideration. Okay.
On which topic? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We all had that. Well, you already submitted.
Our deadline is the 29th. Our deadline is the 29th and Lynn's going to send everybody his updated version before then. That's by this Friday. All right.
Yeah.
Well, it's 8:15. Anything else? Everybody good? All right. Well, I appreciate everyone spending time with us and we will see you at the next meeting. Is that?
Motion to adjourn.
We didn't have a motion to start.
Okay.
We'll be work sessions. Can we get something like an hour, one second and a second, say, this will be a work session.
And that's, that's the purpose of asking for, for all of these wish list items. So that we can kind of come up with some, some sort of a strategy on what we're going to discuss. It's, it's really, we've got things that we're working on already and there's not so much to discuss, but.
Myself, I'm retired. Exactly.
Yeah. No, no, these are the, these are just the, the initial meetings just to get, to get us on track because.
Well, yeah, I understand. Plus with his.
Yeah, we got the unusual situation.
I'm just saying going forward.
Well, I plan on taking a vacation starting Wednesday for, until Sunday. So.
Wow, that's a hell of a place.
So typically the schedule is like.
First and third.
Yeah, the first, so it would be the first Monday and the third Monday would be the commitment.
Be nice to get them all in the same week. I mean, some councils even have a work session immediately before the council session. So it's all fresh in your mind. You can make a motion, take action.
I agree with you.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not object to that at all. We can always change it. Maybe the Monday before the first Monday. So you have a work session at the end of the month and then you have the, the meeting at the beginning of the month.
Yeah, just some, some type of. If there's anything that we have to prepare for the year, we've got to have a few days to.
Well, that's true. So a week is, well, actually, let's see, if we met on Monday. Could we get things on the, is that pushing it?
That's pushing it because the agenda.
Is this Monday?
If you met on Monday, the agenda's closed on Wednesday.
Yeah, if you need the adequate notification of the agenda.
Right.
So at least two weeks, at least two Mondays.
Well, does it have to be on a Monday?
No, it could be any day. We just did a use version.
Okay. We'll discuss that.
Maybe the week before that Monday.
Yeah, something like that.
So there was a wedding here. Was it Saturday or Sunday? Saturday. Went by and picked out something out of my mailbox. I wish I had had a camera, TV camera. There was a throwdown between the families. I mean, there were, there was all of them and they were fighting. I mean, had a fist drawn back. I don't know, the mothers, somebody was like, this wedding's not happening.
Did you at least dial 911?
No, I thought it was great. It was crazy.
They didn't do any damage.
No damage. That's good.
Okay. For future reference, if you see a fight in the.
Wow, it was.
Yeah, my plastic bag returned. There you go.
Thank you. Mark you off the list. We adjourned again. Time ended. 8:18.
Oh, I'd make sure I give her the plastic bag.